This is to advise that notice, time, date, location, to the extent known agenda of such a meeting was promptly posted in the public place, reserved for such or similar announcements on February 25th, 2025, and transmitted to the Times, the Princeton Packet and West Windsor Plainsboro News on February 25th, 2025, and filed with the township clerk on February 25th, 2025. Trish, please call the roll.
Yes. Mr. Panco. Mr. Batey. Ms. Faray.
Yes.
Ms. Applegate. Ms. McVey. Ms. Marte.
Yes.
Page Chairman Lederman.
Here.
Chairman Park.
Here. We have a quorum. Thank you. I don't think I have any comments, so I'll open it up to the public for to come up to the microphone to speak on non-agenda, non-pending items. Step out the microphone, state your name and address for the record. You'll be sworn in. See you none. Next order of business is July 17th, 2024, meeting minutes. Let be known that Mr. Panco has arrived. And did anybody have any changes, amendments, clarifications regarding July 17th, 2024 minutes?
I move the approval of the July 17th, 2024, meeting minutes.
Second. Second by the mayor. All in favor, say aye. Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure that, hold on a second. Want to make sure that the people that are eligible to vote were ayes. You couldn't vote, so. So, Mr. Lovero abstains, and then the rest of us are approved. Thank you. Okay. We're going to talk of the draft site plan subdivision checklist is next on the agenda. David?
That's me.
And Sam, I think you're contributing, right? Okay, good to know.
We all contribute. Good evening, everybody. For the record, this is David Novak with Purchase Associates, tonight discussing the draft site plan and subdivision checklist. Just wanted to just go over a little bit of background about why we're doing this, because it's not necessarily just for the fun of it. It's been about 20 years since the township has updated its site plan, its subdivision checklist ordinance. So, by way of backgrounds, and the board often hears this too, but by way of backgrounds, when an application is filled out, there are checklists that dictate what materials need to be submitted with that application. The last time the township updated its checklist ordinance was about 20 years ago or so. Since that time, there's been changes in technology. So, some of the requirements of the items in our checklist ordinances are just a little outdated. So, for example, one item dealing with soil directed people to use the Department of Agriculture. Nobody really uses that anymore. It's in another resource. So, technology has changed, resources have changed. There is also a major change in the municipal land use law regarding the time of application rule versus the time of decision rule. Back in the olden days, the municipal land use law was structured so that a municipality had the right to change its zoning regulations mid-application. So, if there's an application in front of this board, the council could theoretically, while that application is being heard, change the zoning, which would maybe require an additional variance or even change jurisdiction, and that applicant would really have not much to do about it. It was kind of an unfair system, and that was changed to the time for application rule. So, whatever is set in ordinance at the time of an application now rules, which means it's very important to make sure that everybody knows and everybody's on the same page about what's required on those checklist ordinances. Because those checklists are designed to ensure that the board, the public, and everybody involved have enough information to make a coherent and intelligent decision on an application. It's also there to guide applicants about what their expectations are. Now, these ordinances for checklists typically apply to any type of application. So, if somebody submitting a site plan for 868 units near the Princeton train station, or they're submitting a smaller application somewhere else in town for maybe a gas station, whatever it might be, those ordinances, those checklists all apply, but an applicant has the right to request a waiver, you know, provide it certain information, or request a waiver from not providing certain information. It's important to have that all laid out, because the board can only really request what's on those checklists. If you have an application, if you want additional information, that's not on that checklist item, A, we can't hold them up for being complete or incomplete based on that, and B, they don't necessarily need to give you that information. So, oftentimes, it's better to have that identified on a checklist and grant a waiver rather than go into an application thinking that you might not be able to have that information. So, that's the background about why we're updating these checklist ordinances. One, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page about what needs to be submitted with an application, making sure that resources and directives in those checklists are up to date with current technology, and making sure that applications have enough information for all of us to make an informed decision. So, those drafts were prepared. We had gotten some questions back from council. What I did is that I tried to organize those questions into different categories. Planning and legal questions, landscape architectural questions, traffic questions, and engineering questions. So, what I was hoping to do is just go through some of those questions, provide the answers, and those are all outlined in the memo. Go through each of those categories, and then after that, we can take additional questions regarding the site plan checklists, the subdivision checklist, open it up to the public, and just do that kind of in a coherent fashion.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So, it's, it sounds like the checklist is casting a very wide net on the items that need to be adhered to, correct?
Yes.
And, you know, forgive me, I'm just throwing this idea out there. Does it make sense to have checklists, different checklists, based on the zoning, or the area, or the type of to make it more efficient?
You can't necessarily do that per zoning district.
Okay.
But we do have separate checklists for, say, like a concept plan, which would require less information, or a minor site plan as opposed to a preliminary and final site plan. So, we try to organize those checklists by application type, not necessarily by zoning type. So, we do it in a certain regard already. So, if it's a concept plan, less information is needed than a minor site plan. And for a minor site plan, less information is needed than a full-blown preliminary and final site plan. Yes.
Yeah, because what I was just thinking is that, so you have an applicant goes through 100, and I don't know, I don't remember how many items there are, but goes through 100 items, checks off 27 of them. Whereas if it was more customized for the type of, and I'm just throwing out an idea here, customized for the type of application, the area, or whatever they're building, there'd be, let's say, 30 checklist items, and they check off 29 of those. You know, it's more like, yeah, 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 I'm doing it, instead of like thinking about 70 something that, no bearing. That was my idea behind asking.
No, and I totally get it. For application types, it's smart to take a uniform approach, because you're going to see a lot of overlap, right? So, an application for a fast food facility, facility, fast food restaurant is going to obviously look a lot different from an application for 20 multifamily units.
Right.
But that being said, you might be interested to know what the architectural plant is going to look like for both.
Yep.
Or what the traffic pattern is going to look like, or the signage, or traffic generation. Stormwater controls. So, even though they're very two different applications, you're still going to be looking for some of the same information. So, that's why we organize it with application type, like a preliminary and final site plan, or preliminary and final subdivision, as opposed to use types outside.
Okay. Thanks.
The question, the question I would have would be, I think you said that in your intro was that if I'm an applicant and I have a application in front of the planning board, and, you know, I don't think I need a traffic study, for example, then I can ask for a waiver of that.
Yeah.
And that can be granted, and I don't have to provide you with a traffic study. I don't have to hire a traffic engineer, or whatever. Whatever else is on the checklist. If there are, I don't know, 10 items that I don't think I need, then I can request a waiver, or maybe I question it. I can come into the township and say, hey, why do I need this, or do I need this, or whatever, and somebody in the township can provide me with that.
Absolutely. There's multiple stops for that too, right? So, when an application, and Sam, feel free to interrupt me too. When an application comes in, Sam is typically the first person to get it, right? So, he's looking at completeness right away. Then for site plan or subdivision applications in front of this board, we go through the TRC process. So, if an applicant is building 1,000 units somewhere hypothetically, and they say, you know what, we don't need a traffic study. During the TRC process, Quasi might say, well, you know what, I'm going to disagree. You guys should provide a traffic study, and you should be looking at X, Y, and Z.
Yeah. This is Quasi again. Answer to your question. Typically, the traffic study is triggered or required if it generates 100 trips. If it is less than 100, like one, one or two single-family home, you do not need it. Yeah. So, that's the industry standard. If it is 100 and more trips adding to the roadway system, you will need a traffic study. Anything less than 100, you will not need it.
When an application comes in and I'm reviewing it for completeness, and it goes in front of the TRC for a virtual meeting, and the applicant says, you know, I don't need, since we're picking on Quasi, I don't need a traffic analysis done. The TRC will strongly indicate that we, the staff, would not support it when it comes to the planning board. And typically, that's enough on any item. If the staff's not going to support the waiver request, then they won't get past TRC. They'll submit what we are asking them to submit. So, typically, any waiver request that comes in front of the board, as far as I can remember, a site plan checklist waiver, Fran's pretty good about listing them in his report, David also. I don't know of any case where the board disagreed with the staff's recommendation that that waiver be granted, or whatever. So, we typically don't have a problem with that. And the applicants are very accommodating to submit what we're asking for. But we're getting to a point now where, as David explained, there's more like we have an air and noise consult. So, we never had a checklist requirement for submitting a noise study, or an air study, or something like that. So, we consulted them, and there's language in the checklist now for that. If it's not in the checklist, I can ask, but they don't have to require it or submit it, and the board can't require that either. I mean, so we're trying to get everything brought up to speed in anticipation for the next round four of affordable housing applications coming in maybe in 2026 or 2027.
And I noticed in a lot of these applications, for the checklist pages, there's a lot of just simply NA. And how do you handle those?
That's reviewed. When an application comes in and I send it out to the TRC members to review, that's something that we discuss at the TRC meeting, whether or not it is applicable or not, or why do they believe it's not, you know, it's not needed for the type of application that they have.
Yeah, most of those NAS, if they're significant items, will list as a waiver request, and make sure that by the time it gets to the board, it's something that's clearly indicated as a waiver. Basically, when David and the other professionals, when we're working on this updated checklist, it's, I viewed it as what information is needed to understand the impacts of a project and their compliance with the ordinance standards, the design standards. And basically, is the information that they're providing coming from either a recognized source or from a recognized methodology of doing these things? So that there's, there's a standard of care, a standard of practice is met, and that's an easy way of filtering out the bad information. The professionals who aren't doing something quite by standard, as we can point to the checklist. So, it's not just our opinion that, hey, this isn't good enough, or this isn't enough information. It's that, no, you're not meeting this checklist, which is referring to the standard and outlining how things are supposed to be done. So, it's a tool to help the professionals make sure the information's thorough enough for us and the board members.
Does someone from TRC specifically acknowledge the, we've reviewed the NAS, and we agree with the NAS, right, instead of just signing off on the sheet? It's just like a mitigating risk kind of thing?
It's discussed at the TRC meeting, definitely, whether or not the staff would support that or not, right? If the staff doesn't, then we have another TRC meeting, and they submit that information, and we'll review it.
So, just by signing the sheet that all the NAS are agreed to, and plus all the items that are checked?
We go over each one of those to make sure the staff is, acknowledges that in support of that request.
How is it ensured that a line item for an NA is not missed and skipped over by accident, and, you know, agreed to? Does someone initial each NA, each 100, each of the 100 items?
Typically, no. I mean, I'm trying to think for like, like the Chick-fil-A application, that took three TRC meetings before it was able to get in front of the board. So, it was viewed three times, basically. So, nothing pretty much got through on that. I mean, mistakes happen, but I can't remember one where we, where it was missed during all the TRC, and then it came in front of the planning board, and it was missed during that review also.
Yeah, usually, they'll be brought up in reports as completeness issues during the TRC that this information's not provided, and it's missing, and needs to be provided. Whether it's just information relating to a note on where a source of something is coming from, or something more detailed, like a design aspect of maybe a summary table of the landscape plantings, or the tree removal count, not just showing a wooded area and that it's all being cleared. It's, well, how many trees are in there? You've got to get a detailed number for us, so that we can verify these other design requirements are being met with replacements. So, it's really up to the judgment of the experience of the professionals to know.
My concern is there's 100 items on there. You're going down, you know, are they numbered? They're not numbered, right?
Yeah, one thing that you might not have seen is, in addition to these ordinances, yeah, because there's no reason to. In addition to the ordinances, what we've also repaired in concert with that are fancy new checklist forms, right? So, actually, if you go onto the website right now, you can download the checklist forms, which are scans to scans, basically. We have rewritten those in a Microsoft Word format that will be able to put into a PDF that people will be able to kind of mark. And in those forms, you'll have the item, the requirement, and then checkbox for the applicant and checkbox for the township.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm looking for, exactly.
Yes. You can't see it from there, probably?
That's what I was asking for.
Yes.
We currently have that now, and we will, when this eventually gets introduced and adopted by the governing body. I just didn't want to confuse the issue by sending you, you know, two sheets for the site plan checklist.
I hear you. You know, my background is in operational risks, so I'm trying to mitigate risk. And so, I don't want 100 items looked at. Oh, number seven, which is not numbered, number seven gets missed, and then what happens is they come before the board, and then we don't think about that item, and we don't bring it up. And it's something relevant, bike racks in the wrong place, or bike racks at all, or, you know, or charging station, although we always bring up, you know, get my point?
This will put all of those items in that ordinance in a coherent format, so that way an applicant will be able to pick it up. They'll see a section for map details. They'll see a section for sketch plat, a section for minor, and then preliminary and final, so.
And then checked by the applicant, checked by the township. That's what I was looking for.
Time to roam in font 10, 11. So, it'll be it.
And the board members get that checklist, whether it's a subdivision or a site plan, depending on the application, before you in the packet that I send to each of you, along with the staff reports.
Okay.
And they're all on the website too, under the application, on the planning board agenda, so the public can look at those prior to the application being heard.
So, I have a procedural question. So, you say they can ask for a waiver, right? And then the TRC agrees that, okay, the waiver is, you can go and ask for a waiver, right? But the waiver, only the planning board has authority to grant a waiver. So, when an application comes in, shouldn't the planning board first talk about, okay, these waivers are granted or not granted? Because if, at the end, planning board doesn't grant a waiver, then all the three meetings before are worthless.
The typical way it's done is the applicant makes a presentation. In their presentation, they list the design waivers and the checklist waivers. So, there's two different types of waivers. So, that's part of the application as they presented. Typically, what Mike does then is, after the application presented, the applicant will go over each waiver request, why they think that waiver should be granted. And Dave and Fran in their staff reports will list those waivers, and then Jerry, when we are getting ready to vote, he will enumerate all those waiver requests in the resolution, and then basically, I've known in the past that the chair may say, does anybody have any issues with any of the waivers? Let's talk, and before we go through everything else.
Right. And I'll also ask the professionals, your opinion of the, of this waiver, and they'll say, yeah, yeah, we support it. It's fine. And then we'll have our own opinions on whether it makes sense or not.
I mean, site plan waivers, I remember. I never remember talking about waivers of the checklist.
Am I correct? We sometimes call those admin waivers?
Yeah, I think, yeah. Typically, admin waiver or checklist waiver.
Okay.
And then you have your design waivers, which would be, you know, more site plan or subdivision oriented, like grades, or things like that. But yes.
Now, my only concern about in general is that you're talking about a checklist, and you're talking about the possibility of a waiver on an item on that checklist. And if you, and if you grant that, then we never see it.
Technically, we do not grant, we do not grant.
We never grant waivers during the TRC process, administrative process. The board always grants the waivers, and it's typically done at the end. And they're usually typically, I would say, minor waivers.
Maybe, okay, maybe I'm using the wrong word when I say waiver. But what I'm saying, like, for instance, I'm an applicant. I come to the, I come to the
TRC.
TRC, or I come to township, and I ask, hey, this particular item, I don't see why I need to provide it. I don't need to hire a professional to do this, whatever this is.
Say an acoustic study, for example.
Say, oh, you don't have to. Okay, now, I come to the planning board meeting. I haven't done that, because you told me I didn't have to. Now, I come in front of the planning board. It's not, it's not a waiver or anything. It's just not there, because it wasn't part of the.
It would be a waiver. It would still be a waiver.
It would still be a waiver, and you as the board, and this has not popped up yet, but, because this happens all the time. But if there was, say, an application in front of the TRC, and say hypothetically, I'm just going to use an acoustical study that they request a waiver from, or a parking counter, or something like that. And they submit an application to the TRC. We say, okay, we'll support the waiver request. And then it gets to you as the board, and you as the board collectively decide, absolutely not. We want to see an acoustical study. That is 100% within your right to still request that study. The meeting might need to get carried in order to do it, but just because we would support a waiver request in TRC does not mean you as the board need to support that waiver. Because, and who knows, something might pop up during the middle of the hearing that we as the professionals didn't think about. Or something that you as the board member see that we didn't see. So, yeah, or something that wasn't on the application, and all of a sudden, they submit it, and whoops, we forgot to show this to you guys. So, you as the board always request, or always have that opportunity to request something, that additional information. The caveat is, it needs to be something that's on that checklist item. Because right now, say if you were to, say if it was a variance-free application for a drive-through, and you were worried about noise to the neighbors, and you wanted to know what the acoustical would be. The applicant could say, well, this is a permitted use. We're not going to provide that information to you. At least with this checklist item, we can have that authority to say, no, this is a checklist item. It's something that we need to see, either request a waiver or provide it.
And if they didn't want to do that, the board has a legitimate reason to deny the application.
Okay, so, okay, now I'm kind of getting it, in that if we don't put it on the checklist, we're not getting it. And if you don't have it on a checklist, obviously, we're not getting it. And if there's a disagreement between the applicant and the township, whether it's professionals, or whether it's the board, then that's, that's up for rejection of, on a vote because of they didn't provide that information.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, in this, that scenario, could we still deny it based on, it's not on checklist, but we feel like it's needed? And maybe they can argue or sue that, hey, I'm not going to do it because I don't have to, but we can still deny it if we wanted to?
You could deny it, and it would be litigated, and it would go in front of a judge, and judge would make a decision, okay, you don't require a noise study, because it's not in your ordinance on your checklist, but the board, after hearing the application, thought it was necessary. The applicant can state, well, it's not on your checklist. We're not going to submit it. You didn't think it was important enough to ordinance it and put it on the checklist, so no. And then the board can say, well, we really need that. That's a missing piece of information. We're going to deny the application, because you didn't submit something that wasn't on the checklist, and then we pay Jerry a lot of money to defend that in court.
Yeah. And that happens periodically, where certainly now the checklist is not as substantial as it will be, but it's something no one has thought about. And it really comes out of the, how the project is engineered and landscaped, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I think, I think we do have some powers there.
I agree.
I remember that there had been some application in the past where they've said that the condition of approval, you know, that this document needs to be submitted, or this information needs to be provided, and only then it will be given. Isn't that?
Yeah, we do that all the time.
Yeah, that's what usually, I could bet you it was Department of Traffic study, where some, you know, egress or lane was involved. There was a study needed done on that. It's always like waiting on some department, if I remember correctly.
They asked for a waiver of that document. It was when we got on into the meat of the application. Something else may have been presented by the applicant during the public hearing that wasn't brought to our attention at TRC for the traffic, let's say, and Quasi's like, well, I heard new testimony, and most of the staff reports said subject, new information presented at the public hearing. Quasi may say, well, you know, I need you to update the traffic analysis based upon X, Y, and Z. And the board determines that that's something that it's technical, and we'll leave that up to the staff to make sure that happens, and we'll make it a condition of approval. And then Quasi will check it during what we call resolution compliance review afterwards.
Yeah, also environmental studies also, I think, are subject to condition of approval based on waiting for it to come in, because I know some insect is effective.
So, what I'll do is that I'll just, because we already talked about a lot of stuff already, let me just go through some of these issues. I'll skim over it, so that way we can get to more questions and save some more time for that. But this was a memo that was dated February 25th. So, starting off with some planning and legal questions. Regarding the site plan ordinance, it was page three, item eight. This deals with the review of concept plans, and there's a question about why there's no timeframe for the review of a concept plan. And the reason being is, those timeframes are typically dictated by the municipal land use law. So, you'll hear, Sam, at the end of some hearings, that it's getting carried. Do you agree to extend the clock? And the applicant will say yes. We have a timeframe to review certain types of applications, and if we don't get it done in time, and they don't accept it, you have to deny it without prejudice, or they get an automatic approval. For a concept plan, there's no timeframe. So, there's really no reason to, for the township to buy themselves for that. Both the site plan ordinance and the subdivision ordinance have a new requirement regarding the provision of physical, fiscal, or socioeconomic information. That includes certain information regarding population, school kids, potential tax revenue, things like that. That stemmed from a prior draft order to be prepared several years ago that we kind of put on the back burner. And it's just additional information. Uh, and it's just additional information, especially in consideration of the fourth round of affordable housing of getting some more information and some more insights onto what these developments mean for the rest of the community. Uh, there is a question about whether or not the information that's provided in those documents can be used to deny an application. So for example, number of school kids or or total population. And the answer is no. Uh, if for a permitted use like that, you certainly cannot deny an application based on the number of school kids. Uh, same thing with traffic generation as well. That was a similar question for both the site plan ordinance and the subdivision ordinance. So again, that requirement, it's not required by the municipality, not required by the municipal land use law. Typically towns have their own uh, capability to identify what they want in those checklist ordinances. We just wanted to see in consideration of the fourth round of affordable housing coming up, what some of the socioeconomic impacts of these developments might be, but certainly would not be used as a mechanism to deny those applications.
And David, uh, I'm I'm looking at page seven where a lot of that is set forth with respect to school age, children, impact on the school district, et cetera. And I think this is all good stuff, but I, but certainly it's going to pop out at somebody who's going to say, exactly what you said. You can't do this. You can't deny an application because of this. I think we should have something in here that says this will be, this will not be used by the planning board in terms of their review, but it will be forwarded to the um, school district for their school district planning, which is legitimate.
I mean, just, just to further your concern, I mean, my concern is if that information is in the packet and we deny it, not for that, for some other reason, they will claim that you denied it because of number of kids.
Yeah.
And
So we we want to be careful. So at least I think we want to cover ourselves here to say we want this for a certain reason. Uh, and it's legitimate because the school district should have this information. They have to do planning as well. And we are going to forward it to them and and we would forward it to them.
And and one of the, if I remember, we don't get many general development plan applications. But I think one of the checklist requirements for that is to provide that information for a physical studying to determine whether we need to hire more police or more public works folks or the plant, more parks or something because a number of of people or kids coming into the community. So we have to take in consideration that. And and again, you know, the school district, we work with them on any of the rezonings we do specifically to affordable housing requirements. So Dr. Adelhold is well aware from the minute a first application comes in and, um, you know, we will share our affordable housing, uh, housing element fair share plan for this next goal around with them too. So they're also prepared for that.
Uh, moving on then to the engineering questions that were offered. There's a question regarding when the submittal of an environmental impact statement in green development practice checklist. It's our understanding, I talked to Fran last week, we believe that's actually something that's supposed to be submitted for all development applications. So the environmental impact statement in the green development practice checklist. The ordinance in a different section that discusses the environmental impact statement makes it clear for all development applications. For the green development practice checklist, it's not as clear, but that's the impression that we got from looking at the ordinance.
And just a follow up on that, whenever I've asked an applicant to fill that, the the green development practices checklist, none of them have objected to it. We haven't had anyone object to that or request a waiver on that.
The next question was, uh, are lanta bears required to have a New Jersey license? And I did not know the answer to that prior to this, and the answer is yes, they are. There's a question regarding site plan ordinance on page 14, item F. Why is the item that pertaining to existing ponds, streams, watercourses, and designated green belt wetlands not included in a preliminary site plan section? Um, so that's something that's called out in one portion of the final site plan and not in that same section in the preliminary. The reason being is there's already a section in a preliminary site plan ordinance that um, requires those items and that's in item three E and three F. So the preliminary site plan ordinance already requires that information. So it was just complicated to put it again.
So if someone's applying for a combined preliminary and final site plan, they have to go through the preliminary checklist requirements where they would catch that and then go through the final checklist requirements and and catch that. So they'd fill out the checklist for both preliminary and final if it's a combined application.
Yep. A similar question for the site plan ordinance, page 14, item F, regarding the location of easements, rights of way in public areas. There's a question about why those aren't included in the preliminary site plan section. And the answer is they already are under items three C and three S. Those items are already requested in that section. For the subdivision ordinance, page three, item three, is there a specific date for the USGS, which is the United States Geological Survey topographic quadrant map? Uh, we believe that somewhere back in the seventies, the you you'd be surprised that the federal government does not necessarily update those too often and let Fran has an update.
Yeah, just scrolling around on the website before the meeting, they actually have updated maps available for the two areas or the two maps that make up West Windsor, one being Princeton quad and one being the Heitstown quad. And there's a 2019 version of each and a 2023 version of each.
Well, I said corrected that, so.
Or I'd say my suggestion would be put comma current edition. Because then then it'll be timeless.
Yeah, I I would have no problem with 2019 or more recent.
Yeah, well, most, most recent.
Current edition.
Works for me.
You may want to put the specific uh, maps there too, the one from Princeton, the one from Heitstown, unless there are other geological maps that.
Those would be the only two, I think.
Right. Those would be the only two that would overlap West Windsor.
So if they're looking at different maps, they're looking at the wrong area.
Okay, can you put current edition footnote it and a link to the website that always gets updated?
Uh, we can try to put in a link. Um, most recently, yeah, I think, can you send me the link for that? Yeah, we can throw in a link. Because we have other links in the ordinance still, so I might as well.
Then in the current edition, you go to the footnote, it'll always tell you what the current rule is.
And and all of these documents are on the website and typically when an applicant is applying, they'll have an attorney representing him, using his attorney that knows our town. So when they go on the website to download those documents, they'll have that link there or that, you know.
And it won't be from the seventies, it'll be current.
It's current. Plus they're professionals, they're hiring, I mean, should know what the current.
Yeah.
Current dates are.
In the subdivision ordinance on page five, item 17, uh, that item had originally pertaining to uh, as built rating plans. And there's a question about what's replacing that. And the shorter answer is that item is not being replaced. Uh, we discussed that with township staff and it's really not appropriate there because that information is already regulated in another section of the township ordinance, section 200 dash 252 C one and two.
Yeah, typically typically an as-built rating plan is something you do at the completion of a project before a certificate of occupancy gets done. So to have that as a checklist requirement before an application is even being heard to approve the project, it's impossible to submit an as-built because the project's not done.
Right.
And there's already, again, as David said, it's addressed in another section that we use for requiring that information as part of a certificate of occupancy application. So uh, staff feels it's already adequately, the town's adequately protected in the location it's currently at. It doesn't need to be part of this checklist.
Uh, the next item was also on the subdivision ordinance, page seven, item nine, that deals with the naming of streets. Uh, I fought Sam on this one because I know how badly the board wants the name Novak Boulevard somewhere in township. I'll I'll take a bathroom, not a boulevard. Um, the long and short answer of it is a couple of reasons. Um, one applicants typically don't have street names ready by the time of the application. You'll just see street A, street B, street C. That information usually gets figured out later and historically uh, the township engineer, Mr. Guzic, has worked uh, with emergency services to make sure that there's no conflict with the naming of those streets.
Yeah, we also work with the Princeton post office because we do have uh, zero eight five four zero zip code. So we have to check over in Princeton municipality with them to make sure that there's no conflict with the the coverage with the two municipalities.
And while I made a joke about my name, I think there is a township policy not to name streets after people, right?
Except certees.
Except for certees, yes. We call Sansway at the office though.
Seriously, I do think there is an ordinance that was adopted in the late eighties or early nineties that says that developers cannot use township employee names because for a while there they were using that. So.
Oh, no way, really?
Yeah, they were. So some of the subdivisions are prior municipal employees.
Yeah.
Who who's the employee who's named Marblehead?
I do not know. It probably one of the ex-mayors in town, it could be.
Yeah, often what happens when you name something after that person, you find out 50 years later that the person was a monster. So it's 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 a smart uh, smart methodology. Uh, moving on subdivision ordinance, page eight, item 17. There is a requirement for environmental impact statement. Uh, there's a question about why that was deleted. Uh, I will call that an over aggressive deletion on my end. I think I got a little trigger happy when I was selecting other texts. So that'll be corrected and added back in. So that's not being eliminated. That was a typo. Uh, subdivision ordinance, page 13, item 12. This chapter 143 to be amended, that deals with uh, uh, soil conservation. Uh, I had a discussion with Fran and typically that information is handled by the Mercer County Soil Conservation District. So right now, there's really, we don't see that much of a reason to update chapter 143. Uh, Mercer County Soil Conservation District takes care of that for us.
Yeah, what happened too, I was explaining to David that uh, at the time that some towns, West Windsor being one, Hopeful Township being another, decided that they wanted to control that in-house and not defer to an outside agency. So originally, chapter 143 was where those standards were detailed in addition to what's currently in chapter 143. Uh, at some point in time before my tenure with the township, um, that was done away with and those standards uh, were deferred to the county conservation district. And chapter 143 was revised to remove those from there. So this is a checklist section that was overlooked at the time that chapter 143 was revised. This checklist requirement should have been changed to eliminate the reference to it. So it's it's a late change.
Okay, um, sticking with the subdivision ordinance, page 13, item 15. Uh, there was a question as to when the number of replacement trees would be determined for an application. And that would be typically be determined during the application process. So during the review of it. Uh, moving on to traffic engineering questions, quasi, I apologize in advance as I try to pretend I know anything about traffic. Um, there was, the first question was regarding the site plan ordinance on page nine, item 15. How is the extent of a traffic impact statement determined and who typically determines it? So to answer the second question, uh, the study area of a traffic impact study is typically determined by the applicant's traffic engineer. But there are certain industry standards they need to follow. Um, the study area should be extended to adjacent intersections or roadways, which will carry the generated trips to and from the proposed project site. A minimum of one and up to three signalized intersections along adjacent roadways uh, adjacent to the site should typically be included for any small or medium sized development. And for a larger development, study area would be significantly higher to account for access to major thoroughfare and freeways, the assess the regional impact. So there there are industry standards that would determine what the extent of that traffic impact statement is. Uh, a related question was, is there any wording that could be considered regarding truck traffic generation, which may affect the residential area, but may not be in the immediate area of that development, but could be impacted by it? I discussed that with quasi. It was our understanding that there's really no language that you can put into that study because that would violate typical industry standards. But what the township could consider in that checklist item is requirement for applicants to provide data on truck traffic volume, a truck traffic circulation plan, and the impact of truck traffic movement on adjacent public roadways originating from the public, uh, from the project site. So that would get you some additional information on truck traffic volumes and generation and circulation patterns, should you be interested in seeing that in an application. And then finally, when is the requirement for a traffic impact study determined? That would be determined, like we said earlier, during the TRC review process. Quasi brought up the hundred uh, trips generated as a typical threshold. It would still be the vetted during that TRC process as well.
Typically, when a traffic study does come in for TRC, inevitably quasi is asking for additional information. So it kicks it back to a second TRC meeting, not only for what quasi is looking for, but Fran may have some changes that he he's looking for in the civil engineering uh, packets that was submitted with that. So I I don't remember any major application getting through TRC without two or three meetings at least before it comes to the planning board.
Sorry, sometimes they even change the orientation, for example, the Chick-fil-A. They used to have it on the south side. They completely reversed it. The mirimage and then took it to the northern side. That's one of the reasons they had to go through three TRCs to have it clear.
Just a little bit too. Typically, if it's a new application coming in, I can't require, but I'll strongly recommend that an applicant submit a concept plan to TRC so we could take a look at it before they fully engineer out their site plan because they're more apt to make changes based upon staff comments if it's a concept plan, rather than them submitting a fully engineered plan in. So like for Chick-fil-A or for really any of the projects that the board sees, typically it's a concept plan that may take one, two, or three TRC meetings before they submit a fully engineered plan to TRC to review that. And that may take a meeting or two before it comes to the planning board. So it's vetted quite extensively before the board gets it.
And then finally, there was a couple of questions regarding landscape architectural stuff. Some of these recommendations came from Dan. Um, I did consult with Ed Snikes in my office though, to see if he had any issue with them. They were both on the same page. So no pun intended, for example, on the site plan ordinance, page seven, item D, there is a requirement regarding superimposing and why that's being deleted. And that was recommended because that's already a requirement in section 200 dash 13 C two. So it's covered somewhere else. We were trying to remove those duplications. Um, the same thing with site photographs, that item is already required in section 200 dash 13 C two. Uh, there's a question in the site plan ordinance on page eight, item F. Why eliminate the language for the effective height of a proposed berm or fence? So again, that effective height of a proposed berm or fence. And in discussing that with Dan, it was determined that it wasn't really appropriate to limit a landscape buffer language based on effective height only, but rather the overall effectiveness of the buffer in the fence. So you didn't want to just look at the height, you wanted to look at the totality of that buffer. So that's why we took out the language regarding effective height and tried to get it more related to what's the overall effectiveness. And that can be related to both height with intensity of planting. Uh, site plan ordinance, page 12, item E, why is requirement regarding a landscape management and maintenance schedule agreement being deleted? It's being deleted because it's already established in item five later in the ordinance for final landscape plans. So that's already there. So again, just removing some duplication. And then finally, on page 11, item E, uh, why is there a mention of a planting schedule but not a maintenance schedule? And that's because it's already required in paragraph five in the prior page. So some of those changes that were made were really just to remove duplication. Uh, some items are actually almost repeated paid them. So we tried to clean that up the best we could. So those were the preliminary questions that we got from the council. However, obviously you can open it up to additional questions from the board, from council as well. And, you know, take it one by one.
And any, anybody else, Fran, quasi, Sam, anything to add?
No, sir.
No? Okay, planning board colleagues, any?
Um, one general uh, comment for both checklists. Um, where the word certified or licensed comes up, um, I'd like all possibilities of that looked at. If the word with capital S state should be prior to it, that a person is a state licensed, whatever.
I think that was related.
I it did come up for surveyor, but I think for any any professional.
Yes.
I don't know if we actually have to say New Jersey state because because I mean, it is uh, our local, our our thing. I mean, for council, you guys can do what you want, but I just say get the word state in there.
I I would add state of New Jersey or New Jersey state.
I would because I always ask, are you licensed in New Jersey? Is your license current?
Yeah. Professional planners are licensed, required to have a national license as well as a state license. We're the only one of two states that require that. Does anybody know the other state? I forget. I was hoping somebody heard of the other state. That was a question in the.
Tennessee.
And we'll I'll look it up after this. Um, but yes, we'll make sure to specify, yeah, that.
Where the word certified or licensed comes.
Yes.
Yeah, on both the checklists. Okay, thank you.
And and you, Brad, just in addition to more picking up guys about the rich, um, there's a couple of references to recent even assertion of original language. And one of the things we find, he said it makes it kind of close to my career.
Uh, yeah, so for sometimes like like, for example, the the US uh, USGS information, we'll put in most recent only because sometimes it gets updated, but it's maybe once every ten, twenty, thirty years. So sometimes putting a date on it can be a little bit difficult, but we can try to. Yeah, every memo that I prepare is using orthophobe photography right now from two thousand twenty. Because they say as an idiot. Um, but yeah, we can put in language regarding more recent. Oh, no, we, yeah, I think it's a quick, we'll pop up some of the other comments too. So we can add that in.
Think anybody else?
I'm Mike. Um, I was curious what you had said about the height of the fence and the berm. And you went into some significant detail there about width and height and you know, coverage and how it looks and stuff like that. Um, actually, um, is that then is that kind of wording going to then be in that checklist somewhere?
No.
Like.
Yeah, they can.
On the side somewhere for people to understand what uh, why it is that.
I we want to put too many words on it to define it, right? We want to allow the landscape architect to determine what he or she thinks is an effective buffer as opposed to restricting it just to height. But there are specific regulations in our site plan design standards and our subdivision design standards that talk about what needs to go into that buffer. So replicating that in checklist ordinance, I don't think is a hundred percent necessary. It's just removing that reference to height because it's not just height that's discussed in the site planner subdivision design standards. It's overall effectiveness.
I think the problem.
Restriction, I think, right? I think there's a high restriction on fences.
There is a height.
Yeah, there's a high restriction on fences, but I think that part of the problem too was that when people would look at this requirement, they would specifically focus, take it too literally, that they were looking at the effective height of the physical berm or the physical fence and not including the planting material on it. So I think this language is intended to take the entirety of the proposed buffer, the the physical material plus the plantings as well, the combined uh, combination of the two.
Right. I I I think I recall an application where we uh, re- we require the applicant to increase the height of the fence from like six to eight feet or eight to ten feet. And I I remember that. I don't remember where it was. It was a couple of years ago. Yeah, it could have been. So we're always conscious of the height regardless of whether it states it or not.
So a a language question?
Yes.
Site plan checklist, item three, uh, parenthetical G, page five.
Page five.
Tell me if when you get there.
It was item G, you said?
Uh, three G on page five of the site plan checklist.
I am there.
L I D A R. What is that?
Lidar.
Lidar information. Uh, it's still, it's it's foreign language to me. What what are we talking about?
Oh, oh, uh, lidar information is basically, uh, I'm not the the best at explaining this, but it's basically a laser that's bounced off of the ground in order to get topography. So, um, yes, it's like a light based radar that's utilized overhead to determine what the topography of a site is. So it's a common phrase in engineering worlds.
Thank you.
That's a whole fight between Vemo and Tesla, whether you need that or not for auto driving.
I just did. I just stumbled on it. I have no idea what it was. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, um, I'll ask the public to step up and um, state your name and address to the record. Uh, and um, let's see what you have to say.
I'm I'm off to the recreation commission meeting right after this. So, um, Dan Weiss, Fifteen Canoe Brook Drive, council member here. Want to um, go back to this notion of including an estimate for school children in this. I think that's a little can be troublesome. It's kind of some of the conversations we've had. And it's not something that's anybody is using to make a decision on. It's just kind of peripheral information. And I think it adds risk that it could be used against us in the event that nine after making another reason that simple to that. Um, and sort of the other side of the that coin is, um, what's the basis of somebody coming up with that number? And would we like the uh, the developer to to the applicant to bring up the number? I would think that our own school administration is probably the best people to answer based on, you know, decades of their knowledge of how development impacts uh, school population. And so if there's no real formula or basis that the applicant can use to do that, the value seems to be just not very useful, less we give them maybe a little bit of setting. I'm just spitballing for every one bedroom apartment, sex number of children, two bedroom, side or some fashion of that kind of model.
But again, if we're not using that information to make a decision, is it really needed?
Yeah, I mean, I I have the same concern that if if it goes to cold, it will be used against us. And there are numbers like Rodriguez has done a study and published a number that statewide, but they are worthless because uh, because they don't apply to West Windsor. Like they're 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 a number.
And and some examples, the first one, West Windsor does have more updated numbers though that are specific. Yeah.
Number of the air because it's not going to be used for anything. What value is it for them to try to figure it out?
I will say this, it's something that's absolutely not required in a checklist ordinance. So if there is concern about it. Yeah.
Yeah, I I I have to say, I I think it's a point that's very well taken as well as the mayor's concern that if we're if we're not going to think the data might not be very good, probably won't won't be. We're going to have a qualification that says we're not going to use this. We're just going to pass it off. Um, but so there is a challenge if they're not happy with the result um, of a decision by the board, they very well can say, Judge, they asked us to provide all this information. I I think you can make a reasonable assumption they had in the back of their minds at the very least that when they were making a decision. So I I would be comfortable taking it out. And I think that's probably a better approach.
And and I'm actually even thinking of another scenario where they can submit information and there could be a disagreement of, you know, action on it. I'm also kind of inclined to take that out as well.
Yeah, I I think it's a, I think it's a good thought, David.
Yeah.
I mean, the school district has numbers. We can pretty much tell based on apartments, townhomes, homes, roughly how many kids will be generated. The school district does have a number for West Windsor and different number for Plainsboro. So.
It's and and when we worked on the round three for affordable housing, we work with Dr. Adelhold and this and the school board demographer. And so when we were looking at rezoning properties, determining what type of housing type was on there, the school district was able to determine how many kids that property would produce so they could plan for the future. So and the school district's aware of it well ahead of an application coming in, or in the case of the housing element, before the ordinances are adopted to rezone a particular property.
Yeah. I've removed it.
Now, I'm just curious, uh, uh, from historical perspective, you know, is the school district still using Stan Katz's uh?
No, no, they.
Or they have updated stuff.
No, they did another study after that.
They have done.
Yeah, they did. But see, again, like Woodmont and Princeton Chase, both are apartment complexes, but the ratio is vastly different. It's like two or three times yeah, more in Princeton Chase compared to Woodmont. Now you can say that it's far off from school district. I don't know the reason, but even within township, the variation is great.
So they so they've updated.
Yeah, so we just average out and assume point five.
They indicated that their developments typically don't have a lot of school kids because it's a higher end type of rental community. And actually, the mayor had asked me to check with the school district, Dr. Adelhold, to determine how many kids were coming out of the Wood by the um, uh, market fair and how many kids were coming out of an older uh, apartment complex across from Windsor Athletic Club. It's over there. And it was something like, it was four hundred and some units over at the Avalon or over at the Atlantic Realty. And it was more than four hundred kids coming from that development. But if you went over and it was a similar sized development for Woodmont, I mean, it was less than a hundred. It was a lot different. And they were and they were both garden apartments, similar sizes, but one is a higher end and it's a higher rent in there for that.
It's good to know.
Let me ask a question. How I I agree with all the points about taking it out. It makes sense. How does the school district determine or find out about new developments and that the possibility of generating school age children?
Typically, any new, we we haven't had a a single family subdivision come in 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 ten, fifteen years. But with that being said, yeah, all the new development is high density residential and it's and it's it comes in because of the affordable housing requirements. So we work with the school district ahead of time. Once we determine what our number is, uh, how many affordable units? And then we're able to work with them and they use their demographer to determine how many school kids that's going to produce.
You let them know about any new developments, how many units, so what type of unit, and they come up with, okay, that's going to generate X number of kids.
Correct. And that's the reason why the school district was able to um, anticipate the round three numbers of school kids that would come in because they had that number well in advance of the subdivisions even coming in front of the planning board. So they were able to do their capital plan and and, you know, go out and actually have that, those additions put on the schools well in advance of the kids coming into the district.
All right. Sam, going one step further, even that, you let them know when Jason is about to issue COs. That's far more important.
Too. So even the developments that they were aware of was going to happen, uh, the crystal ball sometimes isn't, is a little cloudy on when COs are going to be issued and when people are going to move in. So, um, as I, as I said during the budget hearing today, uh, my office is the first office that gets any CO request for a commercial or a residential certificate of occupancy, which which you need to get that before somebody could move in or before a business opens. So I'll give Dr. Hadahold the call and let them know that, you know, CO is going to start coming out for the Avalon project. So you should be aware, you know, make sure the bus routes in in play so the new residents know where the kids can go in that new development to be picked up and so forth. So there I'll give them advanced warning before any COs are issued residential wise.
Okay, thanks.
And before Linda goes, I'd say any change? Yeah.
You got, uh, Linda G, Twenty Hawthorne Drive, council member. And you, I I had pages, a lot of questions. Much of it's been already answered, so I'm not going to go over everything. You got the typos, everything from typos to questions about that whole school board section and all of that. So, um, I I agree that the board seems like the majority of the board at least, um, would want to take that section out. I think that was going to be problematic. But I mean, once you ask for that information, I would assume would would not want to pay for all these studies. They just go to the school district and ask them for their demographic studies. Um, and the latest ones that they have, I believe, are on the uh, school district's website anyway. Uh, and once you put these thoughts into someone's head, uh, people are sitting out here and board members, it it's hard not to kind of use that information in the back of your head that the fiscal impacts that are coming in. Um, so.
I agree. Just we'll take that out. Yeah. It would have been, it it's it it sounded good in concepts, but the more we talk it out, I agree with everybody. It's not a good idea.
Right, right. Uh, on on the issue of uh, township engineer, whatever, present, future, what, you know, uh, being approved of. Uh, that the names, names, the street names and all, because many of you were on the board when we, there was an application that came in on Old Trenton Road and and uh, maybe the development name is nice, but then when we started looking at the street names that night, because we discussed that, um, it 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 seems as if maybe some uh, people retiring from uh, you know, the company and they wanted to honor them by having a street named after them. And I, we we just kind of, um, I believe said no to what they had, I guess, presented at some point. I think ultimately we did give um, uh, township engineer Francis, uh, you know, the authority to kind of get final, final approval, but they had to come back with some different things. So I was saying, I would want to know, they may not know at the T PRC level. Uh, but I would not know on the planning board when we get, um, you know, the site plans, be able to look at the names just to.
Linda, I mean, I can tell you, based on my experience with Avalon, there was a lot of going back and forth because fire companies time kept objecting, this company kept objecting. He has to coordinate a lot and that itself took a long time to finalize the street name. The planning board doesn't have all the information. So once they decide the names, they can inform the planning board, but don't, don't make that decision at the planning board. There are way too many books who have to approve the recipe before it becomes final.
I know, I know, but I would want it to go with a theme. The theme is um, um, like flowers. Which, you know, all sorts of flowers or it's on trees or something, something else. I would like to see some consistency and um, perhaps not.
No, I mean, planning board.
Of uh, managers at at that works.
Yeah.
That kind of.
I'm looking at section two hundred dash fifty-six, which is street sidewalks and alleyways and and under street names. Um, there might be some massaging that could be done in that section to avoid that. I I know it's township policy not name it after people. Do you know if that's actually codified or?
This was back in.
Back in the early nineties when that came in, Ray Raider was on the cap, the committee at the time before before the change in form of government. And it definitely went into play and it was an ordinance that said that it's not in the land use section of the code. I don't know what codified section of the township code it's in, but I I do remember that going in.
So maybe that's something if we're worried about names, that's something I could work with Sam and and massage that section.
Just to say.
Yeah.
With the the development name, the streets would flow. It's a nice theme. Everything was about traffic studies. Um, because I think I'm concerned about when large developments come in, could be commercial. We've seen things come in with trucks and there's a lot of concern that half a mile, mile down the road, it's residential sections and the impact to them. Some of these very large developments can have have um, somehow negative impacts. So at the TRC level, can you expand the traffic studies to to include those kind of impacts when it's a very large development.
So for example, Brechtown, one of them, it's the the storage facility. The first thing in traffic study, what we look at is whether or not the study creates pity's will flag it right away, that you missed that intersection, you need to include that. You made, you missed that roadway or a highway, you need to include that into the. Yes.
Quasi, I think you had recommended or suggested that there could be some language put in there regarding truck traffic volume, truck traffic circulation plan.
Right.
We can add that as a requirement in the checklist ordinance too, it says, it sounds like.
Yeah, that that's the response that we have it on fifteen on the traffic. Any questions? Yeah, that, that's the response that we have it on fifteen, under traffic. Any questions? Number fifteen. That's, but, but again, we cannot to wait. That is not required with the industry standard.
Do we have to follow the industry standards all the time?
Yeah. Otherwise, if it doesn't follow, they, they're not going to be liable for any compliance. So I cannot request them something which is not required by the industry.
But adding that truck language at least provides us with some additional information.
Yeah. Example, if, if it is a storage facility, the primary trip generation will be trucks. So we can definitely ask for the truck traffic numbers. And how, uh, the circulation plan, how they plan and, and what are the different hours of operation? We can definitely ask that. Yes.
I want to go back a second to Linda's comment about the names. I've already seen at, uh, the Avalon development there, there already is now a sign that says Nash Drive or something like that, which they wouldn't have put the sign up if it hadn't been approved. Um, yet, uh, John, John Nash was a, uh, West Windsor resident. We already have Nash Park. Uh, you know, near the, uh, the shopping center. Um, so in, in a case like John Nash, well, I, but so that's where I wanted to know, how strict are we going to be on person names? Especially if, let's say, some historical research digs up, uh, a, a historical figure in West Windsor. There's a, a new development in, in the area where they might have, have lived and had their livelihood.
Yeah.
Um, that might be worthy of a street name perhaps. So that's why I'm wondering.
Okay.
Well, I know, but I, I, I don't wonder how strict are we going to be on person names with what Linda has said and what I've just said? Can you take, take that, Dave?
I, I can, because I usually don't get involved with the naming of streets. Um, so I don't really know the thought process that goes behind what gets identified with what street name. Um.
And I don't know about what ordinance happened in the nineties.
Like you say, Nash, you want to honor someone who's.
Yeah, yeah.
Done some significant work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oftentimes for someone, you know, who's contributed a lot to the township or something, I'm just not saying.
No, I, 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 I understand the dynamic what you were addressing, Linda. I just, um, I don't want to, I don't want to close the door.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. I don't want to close the door.
Yeah, you, you'd rather, you'd rather have that name linked to, if it's going to be named after somebody, somebody linked to West Windsor history, hopefully in a positive way. Um, as opposed to just the name of a developer or the name of whoever was the richest guy to buy that name. Um, yeah, typically, uh, you know, I, I think the planning board hasn't, or the zoning board typically hasn't gotten involved in that, from what I understand. It might be worthwhile for the township to consider additional guidance in the site plan and subdivision standards to guide that, but, um.
I don't even know if it should be in that. It's that the subdivision and site plan standard pertain to planning board or zoning board applications. The naming of streets has nothing to do with either of those boards. If you want to have some regulation on it, there should be a, it should be in another section of the existing code or a new code to address that.
I think you're opening a major can of worms if you kind of start scrutinizing names because there's good, you're going to be able to find something on every possible name. Oh, that's so and so's brother-in-law's cousin's uncle. You know, you know, so they name it, it goes before the committee. Is it an acceptable ma, name? Or does it have some, you know, crude meaning in another language that we don't want it in the town, that kind of thing? But I, I don't know if you could like, you know, like a Nash Drive, an Einstein Way, a Harrison, a Hamilton. You know, to Linda's point, the historical figures.
Yeah. Is, uh, i- isn't that a, a function of township council now? They choose the name or who choose the name?
As we heard, uh, the developer will submit the name to the engineering department.
Oh, and then.
The engineering department will coordinate with both post offices, both towns, and with emergency services, the police, to make sure there's no similar sounding streets in either Princeton or West Windsor. And, um, that's all that they're looking to do, to make sure for emergency services reasons and for postal delivery reasons, there's not going to be an issue with the fire department, the police or the post office delivering that.
So the engineering department then is the responsible party, then not the developer.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, there's section two hundred dash fifty-six under streets, sidewalks and alleys. There's a subsection L for street names and there's several different, um, design requirements for street names, but basically street names, division names, so not duplicate or nearly duplicate the names of existing streets or something. Goes to what I was saying, like office. And things of proper street names should. Type streets. On help. Freeway. Uh, you want some common sense there. And it requires the developer to submit proposed names to community development so that what engineering does, those and circulates them to all the different agencies to look for conflicts.
Yeah, I, I, I just bring up a point in Princeton, for example. Um, Princeton has Elm Road, Princeton has Elm Court.
Oh.
And the Princeton University decided to name its name, main road in its campus Elm Drive. So there's three Elms in Princeton. And it can get confusing at times. And I would just, I just wonder what Princeton University has done with their late campus in terms of the naming of their roads in there. Uh, were, were those approved by, uh, the engineering department?
I'd have to check on that. Honestly.
I always laugh, a major, a major way in Bucks County is called, explain this to me, street road.
I've been the, uh.
It's called street road.
Yeah. I've been the planning. I've been a planning consultant for, uh, I've been a planning consultant for Rockaway Township now in Morris County for fourteen years. They have a Mount Hope Road and a Mount Hope Ave. I still get them confused to this day.
You're probably not the only one.
No, no, no.
Out of Bridge was actually, no, I would bet. For substantial, since I see the, we should think, and I, uh, so we actually just said about trying to get the man from the applicant, what the, uh, you know, more than the industry standards might be, but you know, I mean, I, I just try to think that, let's say, the parking or the lighting, we do ask, we have different standards compared to what, um, you know, other sides or even for lighting. So, um, am I? I mean, if you think about the traffic differently from.
Uh, yeah, the traffic, uh, what the, the, the issue in question is the truck. So that's, in order to address that issue, we, that's why we are adding some languages. So in that way, even though it's not required by the standard, it is kind of like an added requirement. Like a township requirement. That's why we are adding that language, which will not violate because I, I don't want them, the applicant, to think that, oh, it's no, nobody in no other township asked for it and it's not required by DOT or, or other, uh, state agencies or federal agency, why are you asking it? You, you see what I'm saying? Because they, they will definitely question that in the TRC meetings. That it's not required anywhere. Why are you asking it? So? But again, in order to address that issue, the truck issue, we are, we are adding some additional language that we are adding, we are asking for them to provide the truck traffic data and the traffic cir, truck, traffic circulation plan. That will pretty much address the concern. So we are, yeah.
Justify us then for, you know, um, probably justify having different standards, parking or lighting.
I can answer the parking one.
Yep.
Um, I can, maybe even the lighting one, but Fran will correct me when I get it wrong. Um, for parking, the residential site improvement standards establish a maximum parking standard, right? So for certain types of residential units, residential products, they establish a maximum, but they say that the municipality or the reviewer, which is us, can lower those standards based on surrounding environmental factors. So maybe public, you know, community factors, uh, location to mixed use environments, location of public transit. So the ability to reduce that is already baked into the residential site improvement standards. Uh, for something like lighting and in full disclosure, I've never seen an application in any town and not have to request a waiver for lighting for whatever reason. Um, those are township ordinance specific standards. So we, as a municipality, have the ability to grant a waiver from that as opposed to something that's more industry based, um, which is more of a uniform approach, but for a, for example, like lighting, that's one of the powers that we have as a board is to grant that waiver from that request because sometimes maybe a point five average isn't the best if you're trying to provide additional lighting for public safety or if you're near a neighbor, maybe you want that reduced even more. There's a little bit more flexibility with that.
And in addition to David, what just David said, even though we add those language into our requirement, they, they can always ask for waiver. Our track, our project will not generate this many of trucks, so there's no need to provide this information. They can always ask for it. So if they do, then if based on case by case, we'll have to approve it.
First, uh, quite often we debate that, uh, you know, when applications come in and we're not really sure, is this lighting enough or is this parking enough or is it too much? You know, so you're sort of trying to find the standard which works for our township. And then usually you're looking to industry standards or, you know, you, you're not expert here, you know, so on and the others. So we, we look to you folks to sort of guide us.
And, and, and I'm sorry, and answer to one of the aspects of answering your question would be all this parking, lighting, it is in, inside. It doesn't go outside the site, project site. When I, but when I ask for traffic circulation, it does include the public roadways, the intersections, the surrounding area. So that's not included in typically into industry standards. It goes into the public right away. So that's why I cannot ask them for or force them to submit something which is not actually required by the state or federal agencies. So that's one of the reasons. The parking, lighting, everything is inside, on, onsite. They don't go into the outside the project area. So we can ask any, any variance or any waiver. We can put any language, but once it goes outside the projector side, that becomes more like a public. So we cannot force them to do something which is not required by the industry.
Um, I'll say something about, how does, how do we arrive at what's the appropriate, you know, um, for that application based on what standards say and, you know, what you folks are.
Um, so.
That's something to, you know, debate quite often.
And that, yeah, that popped up with the last application too with Bear Creek. Um, in terms of parking requirements, uh, the, everything is always application specific, right? So for parking requirements, we have an array of different parking requirements based on zoning districts. I think our lowest one is probably for the four hundred steps application is one parking space per unit. Uh, other areas, we hold people to the residential site improvement standard requirement. One point eight to two point one for garden apartments. Don't ask me how I memorize that. Um, different standards for different types of unit products. So when those applications come in, we're looking at typically what the residential site improvement standards would require, what our ordinance standards would require, and then always what they're providing. And sometimes those applicants will have their own industry standard, not to use that phrase again, but they'll have their own experience on what their parking needs are going to be based on other products that they build. Uh, that popped up for the Chick-fil-A, for example. So our ordinance specifies a certain parking requirement for fast food in general. They, as Chick-fil-A said, hey, we have this many other establishments in operation. Based on that, this is the information that we know that we typically require for parking. So we try to create a, a standard for our parking requirements. But there's often a lot of either site specific factors or, um, we'll call the market factors that play into account too. So we have to look at that and then ba, basically make a judgment call to say whether or not that's reasonable. Or no, we're not really buying that because of X, Y and Z, or yes, we buy that, but as a condition of approval, please bank certain spaces. So that way, if it turns out that you're on the lower end of that requirement, you're not having an unused parking area. So at least when it comes to something like parking, it's really a balancing act of what do we require? What do we typically see in the state? What are some general standards that say the Institute of Transportation Engineers might find? Because they have certain standards that they look at throughout the country. And then what does the specific end user find with their market product? And we look at those four factors and we see based on that, how far apart they are, how reasonable they are. And if they're really far apart, what could be the negative impact of that? What's the substantial detriment to the public good? Um, are they providing too much parking? Is that leading to an increase in impervious coverage? And if they need to vary it from that, then we start to get an inclination of, hey, something here might not necessarily be right.
Because we need to know that is why this is.
It's a, I tell everybody with this job, it's like I'm juggling, but I'm juggling knives and nobody ever taught me how to juggle. So it's, you kind of figure it out as you go along, but, uh, working with the other experts is always a, a big help with that because they have their own insights, their own expertise. Uh, and by combining all that experience together, you get a, a, a pretty decent product. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay.
Okay. Um, Andrea Mandel, forty-six Ellsworth Drive, sir. Um, I, uh, I don't know which Ellsworth named after. I've lived there.
Is there more than one or?
Excuse me?
I didn't know there was more than one Ellsworth.
Uh, I assume it's a family. I'm not sure the whole history. And I'm there kind of over draw. Anyway, what, a lot of names of streets that are named after various people. Um, I'm the council president in West Windsor. And I've also, as everybody knows, been on the planning board with all of you. Uh, interesting, I probably thinking probably weren't, what, did something like seventy-five planning board meetings over the various years I've been on it. And I don't remember ever not having a waiver for parking for application. And, uh, just totally off topic, of course, um, our, our ordinance generally requires an exact number of twenty-seven point three parking spaces. I think we are allowed to round one way or the other. And, um, maybe if that, if that's an issue and we don't want to do that waiver, I've always wondered if we should have a little bit of a range so that we don't need to, but that, that's a totally other issue.
I, I don't hate that idea. Yeah, I don't hate that idea at all for parking or for lighting sometimes still, but yes.
Yeah, lighting is another whole, whole thing. Um, I want to thank you, everybody, for that whole discussion on the waivers because a lot of my questions involve how do these waivers work? I still have an issue, which I don't think was brought up in that we talk about a complete application. And as Dave went into the history, now a complete app, once an application is complete, uh, meaning that you've accepted it in as a complete application, which I assume also means everything in the checklist has been checked, checked off. And that's what makes it a complete application. Um, once that happens, that application is now in stone and the clock starts running. And everything we do has to be based on that. Plus, asking for anything additional after that becomes difficult. So I'm a little concerned where it exactly how that waiver process works. For instance, suppose there, the TRC says, yeah, I think they'll do the waiver at the planning board. The planning board goes, looks at it and says, there's no way. We're not going to do this waiver. That doesn't restart the clock as far as I know. Uh, I believe that unless you actually are rejecting the application outright, if you're not giving that particular waiver, and there are times when we have rejected a waiver on a sign or something here and there and the project went ahead. Um, if you are, with, with the clock is still running. So, um, I would like to see a little bit better definition of exactly in here of what it takes to say that something needs a waiver. Um, but doesn't, um, and, and obviously you can't give the waiver, but you're going to consider that application complete anyway, whether that has to be signed off by a particular officer, perhaps, uh, the head of engineering or perhaps a couple of people. Um, I'd like to see something a little bit more definitive, other than the way this is written right now. It's, well, you have the right, you can go to the planning board and ask for a waiver. I don't want a situation where somebody comes in, doesn't fill out anything on this whole checklist, basically says, I'm going to ask for a lot of waivers and then comes into the meeting and says, and says, the clock's table. And then comes into the meeting and says, and says, the clock's table. Do so.
Yeah, I think unless, unless they believe a waiver is warranted, they won't deem the application complete. So your concern, just take an extreme case, they won't submit anything and say, I'm asking waiver for all fifty items on there. Sam won't deem the application complete. So if there's going to be a code case, the code case will be whether the application is deemed complete or not. The application is deemed complete only when they, as a TRC feel comfortable that the waiver request is justified and they can support it to the planning board. It's very likely that the planning board will still say no. That's the question I asked before, that what happens if the planning board says no? The applicant can say, hey, heck, I'm not going to.
Keep in mind, there's two different types of waivers. There's the design waiver and there's a checklist waiver. So if the board denies a signed waiver, that's not going to start the clock over again or anything on that one. Now, I don't ever remember the planning board not going along with the staff on a waiver request for a checklist requirement. Anything is possible on that, but I guess my question to Jerry.
A little bit, the way this was written, I felt sort of said, well, uh, you could, you know, we're accepting this and you can go to the planning board. I, I would just like it a little bit more in stone.
I could, I could tell you that if someone, an applicant came before the board and had twenty items or waivers, first thing I would do is I would ask the professionals, you know, what do you think of why they asked for twenty waivers? It doesn't seem logical that they didn't get sign off by the professionals prior to coming here. And maybe the professionals would agree with nineteen and maybe there's one left over, but if the professionals didn't agree with twenty, then, you know, the meetings can end early.
If the, if the staff during TRC doesn't agree with all the checklist, um, waivers, it will never make it to the planning.
Right. So, um, I'm just looking at the way this was written. And by the way, one of the problems I think we had is that when we got this document, which I usually don't print out except in coming, um, a lot of stuff is missing. So like some of the things you said, in other words, we go to section three and all we got was D, where the change was made. We didn't get the document we got didn't have A, B, C, or anything like that. And so when you, when you say to me, oh, this is in another place in the document, we never, the council, the council never actually got the full document.
Well, this, this is the full document. We only changed portions of the.
The only thing we saw were the places where.
Yeah.
Which we, we changed.
Otherwise it would have been a, like a fifty page.
Okay, it's a, it's a PDF. So I don't, I would, I would rather see the whole thing and then see where the changes are made in the, in the document.
Well, that's what we did. We, we identified those changes, but
but the only.
Reference the ordinance online. I mean, we can add the whole thing. It's just going to take a very long time.
Well, I mean, you had to take it out in order to do this.
Yes.
Saying rather than take it out, um, I think I would want to see. You, you had to go through there and say, I'm only putting in this stuff that I'm changing. Rather than go through that effort, I'd rather see what else is in that ordinance so that I can know, like, when, when you made that change, uh, and you're saying for some of these things, it's somewhere else in the ordinance. Well, I don't know.
Andrea, we could do that when we send it to council for introduction.
Yeah. Cause right now I don't know if it actually said the same thing or if it's like other language.
Andrea, after tonight, they will send you the final draft ordinance, then you can decide when you want to introduce.
I'd actually like to see the checklist.
Did you guys also get the, you didn't get the form too?
No, actually I was gonna.
No, I didn't. I just sent, I just sent the ordinance. Yeah, cause the form has.
Decided to be nice and not ask for it.
Well, the reason I didn't do it on the ordinance is because the form had everything on there. So you'd be able to follow the form and see.
Right. What I was going to ask for from you was, do you have a checklist that reflects what's here? And that way I'd have much I could compare it to the current checklist and that would mean more to me than.
Yeah. So I can either amend the ordinance to include everything, or when we send it over and have those checklists included, because those checklists will have everything on there.
What we can do is we can amend the ordinance and show the whole ordinance. And then that's what'll get introduced, but I'll also send over the checklist too. So that. Time to do if the council wants that and that's what it's going to.
I, I, because of the word format, I have to replicate everything. So, but it's fine, but I, it's just, it's not going to be done in a week.
This, but maybe for the future, if we could see the full ordinance where it goes. Um, but, oh, just talking about the one I'm talking about here. It says waiver of information. It says no application for development shall be deemed complete unless the items, information, documentation listed in the applicable checklist are submitted. That's what you're removing.
No, that's what we're adding. Under added text is underlined and text being limited is struck through. So right now there's no language in the ordinance that says.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. That's being, that's being added in there.
Board may waive submission.
David, why don't you send her the complete ordinance after the meeting? And then there's no, I mean, she can decide whenever she wants to introduce it. So we can, if, if she's not happy, we can move. There's no need to work on the language here. This is for technical questions.
Is Dave going to come to our meeting? Is, is he going to come to our introduction meeting?
Which meeting?
Uh, when we introduce this.
I didn't hear you.
I said.
No, no, but you can ask before.
Well, this is my chance to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You can ask technical questions, but language, something you can do at your own leisure.
Um, no, this is, this is all.
Yeah, no, no, no. Ask, ask any technical bit. That's what this is for.
Okay. One problem I have on the concept plan. Uh, you've removed the whole thing about the location.
Can you, can you, can you tell the page number and stuff? So.
Uh, I'm, this is a change document with my changes. So I have it on three. I don't know if.
I'm following along. It's, uh, you're talking about page three item.
Uh, dash twelve, where it says sketch concept plan under A, the first one is number one.
Yes.
Okay. So you've, um, you're taking out there, uh, the location is property. Um, the location of the property is being removed there. You've got that in brackets, believe.
Can I see your document? No, that's still, yeah, it's still in there. Yep. That, that's, that is, that information is still going to be in there. So anything that's underlined is added text. Anything that's struck through is deleted.
So one through seven is going to be included.
Yeah. So a, a lot of that information is remaining the same. We just, I just took it out of a paragraph format because I thought that was really difficult to, to read and putting it in a, um, non paragraph format. Uh, uh, other people would call it a list. That's thank you.
Okay. Actually, is that in there?
Uh, that might not be in there. That's why I was looking at. Yeah. Okay. So you add a showing its connection within the map. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, okay.
These are mine.
Those are your edits. Yes. But the red text underneath that is in there. Yes.
So the, these are, these are, uh, these are things.
Those are your proposed additions. Yes. Okay. I've not seen those.
Uh, oh, you hadn't, you never saw this?
I don't think so. No, I, I saw a bunch of, yeah. Actually, you know what? Hold on. I'm, I might've spoken too soon. I'm sorry.
Okay.
That's the site plan one?
Um, so the number one where I had, where you had the location of the property is shown connecting within the maps, rounding area.
I did add that. Yes. So in the new draft, that's going to be added in there. Yes. I, I'm sorry. I did see that. So.
And then on, I also added a seven and eight under that.
Proposed stormwater infrastructure and potential environmental restricted areas?
Yes.
I, I will add those as well.
That is critical. When I've seen, seen these concept drawings, it's not in there and the final thing comes back totally different.
Totally agree.
Because the stormwater changes the entire design.
And when I mentioned to Linda, that when we resubmit this, I'm going to have, make sure you have a color printer, because I have the red, which is what we're changing the ordinance. And also what we're adding.
It was a dark red and a light red.
I know. We, I gotta, I gotta figure out how to change the dark red, but we will change that to like a blue or something. So it'll be easier to stand out.
Should be around page six, uh, after T is a U, which you added, I think a U, because that's in blue. Um, I, I wanted to make sure that we have a map showing the project and its connection to the surrounding area. So.
That was on which page? I'm sorry.
That would be, um, that would be six, uh, should be probably still on page six U. It would be on the next page.
And that's showing the property in relation to the drowning area. Yes. Yep. That'll be incorporated in there though.
All right. Another change, but we're taking that whole section out where we're asking them to do that whole thing.
That's going to be all removed. Yes.
Yeah. Cause I know Linda, I want to give Linda credit. She's been questioning about that since, since the day, day she got this.
I, uh, I, I, I am a convert to that. So I agree. It should be removed.
Took out this, which I always like having in there. They superimpose that's on my page eight. It's a D and an E.
Yes. That is actually, I think elsewhere in the ordinance. So that's why we took that one out.
Okay. And that one is somewhere I probably just don't have it.
It might, and then I, I actually be, I gotta check the reference number. Uh, I don't think that's actually in the requirement. That's somewhere else within the ordinance that requires that. That's a superimposed.
Like on maybe the site plan, like a separate ordinance, what's on the site plan or something?
It's two hundred.
Cause that's another whole large, what has to be included with that.
Yeah. Two hundred thirteen C two, uh, which is an aerial photo superimposed in the plans with tack boundary. So that is in the preliminary requirements already.
Just that, I think everybody's always found pretty useful.
Oh, yeah, very much so.
Then we had a whole talk about the traffic study, which I did have some questions on where the study area and some of the guidelines you were talking about, I think we have gotten but we have gotten submissions that didn't have that kind of extent. So is there a way that we can make, um, be a little bit more specific as to the size of the, um, of the, uh, area for the traffic study?
I, the, uh, yeah, thank you, but I don't determine that. It's a traffic engineer for applicant who determines. I can conquer with it or I can object it, or I can ask him to expand it.
So you can't put it on as an requirement. You can object for specific reasons at that.
No, absolutely not.
Okay. It's sort of like the hen house being guarded by the fox, but take, take what you can. And then I think you also said that the landscape management maintenance schedule is elsewhere.
That is elsewhere in the ordinance. Yes.
Um, and then there's another on the traffic study. Get through this fast. Don't worry. We can, you can tell the mayor. I'm moving quickly. What? You're what? It is. Um, okay. And then, um, then there was also, uh, I, my fourteen, it was F. This is, this I believe wasn't in my ma- in the major site plan section. Uh, but that could be a matter that it's somewhere else.
Yes, that's a, that's referenced elsewhere.
Okay. And same thing, I think for K, that, that was just because I, we didn't have the whole thing. And and the environmental impact statement, green development practices checklist that it will be, both of those will be, um, in, in all of them.
Yeah. Looking at the EIS section, it says it's, has to be submitted with every development application. And that section also talks about the green practice checklist. So I'm assuming that they're both submitted at the same time.
And the EIS, if, if I look at them, a lot of times that, that gets a bunch of not applicable's, uh,
Yeah.
all, all over it too. Um, okay. So those, so those will be still required and everything.
Yep.
Subdivision, I'm pretty sure most of the questions I had were pretty similar.
Let me get that one up. Cause I, I also incorporated your changes into that one too.
Cause some of the, like, for instance, there's a whole, the, the, the grading plan and stuff. We said that was somewhere else. These are very, very similar. Other than there's no concept plan in the subdivision.
The, the grading plan information is I believe that's in a separate section of the ordinance as well. That's in section two fifty two, which is actually outside of the checklist requirements. It's regulated elsewhere outside of the checklist. So that's two, uh, two hundred dash two fifty two.
So that's one of the things that might be requirements for the drawings and the site plans and all the other stuff that's
Yeah, typically.
Part of the.
Required.
Oh, the other one I had is on the trees, which I don't remember exactly where it was. Um, there was some.
Tree replacement, right?
Yeah, the tree replacement. Now, if I remember our ordinance, we pro- we kind of say that if you've done it through the, um, through the planning board already, then, um, it doesn't go through the regular permitting individual process. You can sort of do that through the planning board. So I'd want to make, so is that, is the, um, so where I read the requirements here, they didn't have to actually do an inventory of all the trees. They changed. The, the original one was you had to do an inventory. I don't have, remember which page.
I'll coordinate with Fran on that. We, we have something to say. Okay. Identification and identi- let me try that again. Location and identification of all existing street trees greater than five inches uh, in diameter, measured by breast height and all non-street trees greater than two and a half inches at breast height. So I'll coordinate with Fran to make sure that matches up with our pre-order DEP. I, I think I made sure to do that. Do that with Fran, uh, with Dan beforehand, but, uh, let me coordinate with Fran.
Like to make sure that does get done at this stage.
And you're, and you're correct Andrea too, that if an applicant, when an applicant's a, a site plan approval, that would suffice, they wouldn't have to apply for a tree removal permit.
And I remember we did that in the, in the ordinance. So I'm assuming that whatever we make people pay for removing those trees or to replace the trees in most cases, that we're going to do that for an, for a larger applicant that comes before the planning board. And the only way we could do that is to have the actual count come before the planning.
If I remember, if they can't replace the trees on site, then they have to pay, uh, an amount to have it replaced for the town to place them somewhere else in the area.
Right.
So all that would be determined at the planning board if they can't replace it on site.
And they have the same three tree max or whatever that everybody else has. So any, if those trees come down, they'll have to find another spot for them or pay us a nice little chunk of money for good sized trees. I think that's it. Okay. Now, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, anybody else from the public wish to speak? I don't see anybody. Anybody from the council?
You are public.
They spoke already. The, the rest of the public doesn't, doesn't want to speak.
Let me just outline what the next, be that staff would make to discuss tonight. Um, we'll get it over to the clerk's office so they can distribute it to the council members. They'll have a look see over it. If they're okay with that, then we'll introduce it at a council meeting. It'll be referred back here for the planning board to make comments on to verify it's in compliance with the master plan. And then it'll go back to the council for a public hearing. Um, if it gets approved at the public hearing, the mayor signs it. Twenty days later it becomes effective and we're set to go.
That sounds good. Any, any other comments from, uh, planning board yet?
Just curious why, uh, the checklist wasn't updated twenty years until now.
Cause I've only been here for five or six years.
I was going to say that.
There's a, yeah, every time it's like that. We have certain items on the cleanup list that this is on, signage is on there. Hopefully lighting one day.
Do we remove our, all references to eight track plays and thumb drives?
Yeah. We still have LaserDisc in there though, just in case. I do have VHS tapes. I still, I collect those. Uh, we'll worry about it.
Uh, okay. Any, any, any other comments from, uh, planning board? Um, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved by the mayor, second, Simon second, all paid to say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, meeting adjourned.
So, uh, what does April look like at this point?
Looks good.
You don't have to cancel many.
No.
April second, we're shooting a public hearing to convene planning plan and construction development. For the R nine area, which is the old public works building.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
April sixteen, shooting for a drag, um, work session to go over stormwater management. That's the west element down, down, down to the bars, six or twenty eighteen minutes average.
Thank you. Okay. Meeting adjourned. March nineteenth are coming in, but it's going to be a quick meeting. It's, um, just catch up on catch up on minutes resolution, set the close session. It should be. It should be fast.